Mayor Querem, Councilmember Newman, Gomez, McCall, McCransky.
Here.
Please stand if you want to ask some questions.
...of the United States of America and Peter Rehman, religious companions, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started, we got a combination, a couple of commendations. I'm going to call, keep camera up to the for you, just make sure the mic's on. If you would.
With the green light. Keep talking loud.
Dan and Dustin, you guys want to? All right. Thank you for joining us here tonight to recognize the life-saving efforts of Sergeant Dan Jaeger and Officer Dustin Shale. On Monday, February 7th, 2022, at approximately 1:05 a.m., Princeton Police and Fire Departments were dispatched to 637 East Peru Street for a report with fire in multi-unit apartment floor. Upon arrival, officers observed the residence on fire and began assisting with evacuation of the residents still inside. Due to the freezing temperatures, those evacuated from the building were placed in vehicles to stay warm. Sergeant Jaeger and Officer Shale observed four subjects on the roof of the structure trying to get down. All the firefighters on scene were actively fighting the fire, so Dan and Dustin began assisting the people off of the roof. Due to the height of the roof and the absence of a ladder, the residents were unable to get off of the roof. At first, they rescued the two children by catching them as they jumped from the roof. Once removed from the roof, they were placed inside of vehicles to stay warm. While awaiting the return of Officer Shale, Sergeant Jaeger was forced to react when one of the remaining residents jumped from the roof. He safely caught her, however, in the process, he severely broke his leg. Since this incident a year ago, Dan has undergone several surgeries and medical procedures to repair his leg. He's still unable to come back to work in his full-duty capacity, however, he is currently assisting with administrative duties in a light-duty role. I value Dan's expertise and dedication and am thankful he is able to return to work with us in spite of his injury. The actions of Sergeant Jaeger and Officer Shale that early morning a year ago are nothing short of heroic. Their efforts, at the very least, prevented injury to a family and quite possibly saved their lives. I'm very proud of both of them for putting their safety at risk to protect others. Tonight, both Dan and Dustin are being presented with life-saving awards for their bravery and composure during the session tonight. And if you guys would like to step forward, we have the family here tonight that they were able to help us.
For Princeton's finance, thank you.
Thank you. You want to send them through the machine here?
So everyone that was here for that, if you would like to leave, we'll give you a few minutes to go ahead and exit, or you can step around. Okay, so moving on to public comments. We're here for public comments. Before you can do it, come up to the mic and state your name.
I got a public comment.
State your name.
Huh?
State your name.
David Nelson. About your burn pit. I've been complaining ten years at least. Nothing gets done. I've come in to see Teresa, I've come in to see Pete numerous times. My wife's called Pete or somebody several times and never got an answer back, never got a call back. I went to see Quinn today, and it's just, I live like a half mile straight north of that stupid thing. And it's like every day, every morning I get out, it's this, it's a bowl-shaped thing, so all that smoke stays there all night. It's just totally ridiculous. So something needs to be done with that. I had talked to Rachel, the city manager, before, and they said they're supposed to have an air curtain thing to take so it doesn't smoke. But where's that at?
We're, believe me, we're working on it. The curtain.
Ten years?
Well, the curtain is well into six figures, so it's going to be an expense for the city. That is a problem that we have had. I know it's been out there, and we've got a problem with this. Like you say, ten years, probably longer than that. And we're not even starting the fires, you know, they just, you know, start going. We go out there, we go out there a lot, and we, I know the guys are out there trying to turn everything over and spread it out.
In ten years, you haven't figured a way to keep it from spontaneous combustion? I find that hard to believe.
Yeah.
With the day of the bulldozer, bulldoze that stuff all, spread it all out, cover it with dirt, whatever you have to do. We shouldn't have to, you should be a good neighbor to us, because we're spending money in town here on taxes and stuff, but yet we got to breathe that every day. It's totally ridiculous, unacceptable, in fact.
I agree with you.
It's just, I can't believe in ten years, you haven't done anything to cure that problem, or even come close to curing it.
Same thing. They've tried different remedies for it, and then, you know, you give it some time to see if it's going to work, it doesn't, and then they go and they do it. There's a lot of research that goes in it. We're trying to find a way to address this and maybe not have to get an air curtain.
Well, how about maybe pile it somewhere else?
Well, we don't have anywhere else that we can.
Man, I think you got a place out there in the, out towards the red-covered bridge, go underground there, pile it there. Your industrial park, at least I don't have to smell it. Or let them burn it in town every so many days. Individuals let them burn it. I don't know why we're getting stuck with it.
And they do, you know, we have a burn policy throughout the year. Well, we're going to, believe me, we are very aware of it. I live on top of the street, I smell it sometimes. I mean, if it does, it goes all the way.
Well, you ought to come out there, you ought to come out there tonight and smell it. I mean, it's totally ridiculous. I guess I'll have to come every meeting and gripe about it, I guess, because it don't seem to get taken care of.
Well, believe me, we were.
This ain't rockets, I am.
Yeah, well.
I told you, we're spreading out.
We have been, we do that all the time.
You've got all that area to the south of that, where it's burning, pile it in there.
We're trying to control the amount of stuff that goes out there as well. And, uh, we know.
No, I mean, what's it going to take, another 25 years? I mean, 10 years is a long time, if you can't get it figured out in that amount of time. But that's all I got.
We'll hear it figured out. Thank you. Any other, uh, public comment?
Just kind of, no, I'm too kind enough to make a joke right now.
State your name.
To the tech park, Sam Fisher. I'll read this to try to be as concise as possible. Excuse me. It appears that since the solar array topic is on tonight's agenda, the mayor feels he's got the necessary votes to pass it. And I would imagine there's been a lot of lobbying done the past three weeks to get this conditional resolution passed. And so maybe some of the arguments was maybe it was some money the city has already spent on the project, it would just go to waste if it's unapproved. Or that Princeton might be viewed negatively and not move forward with the project by I M E and developers for future projects. In answer to both, had this been done in a timely manner and according to the way it should have been done in the first place, those wouldn't be those issues. I do hope my comments persuade the council not to afford with this project, but at the very least show how this was poorly handled and not indicative of how we should do business. The community, in fact, the property owners, even members of the city council were not informed about the project in progress. Having reviewed agendas and meeting minutes of every council meeting since the decision was made in July 19th, 2021, to move ahead with the option of the two sites for the solar array, there has not been one report on the status or mention of the solar array being placed in the tech park. That's during an 18-month period which included 35 council meetings. Not a word was spoken about the project. Unless I were a council member, I would be extremely concerned that everybody involved in the project that knew about it may have thought it necessary not to inform. You should have been informed every step of the way, and I think some of the things I showed to you last time I was here were things that you weren't aware of. So my question tonight, and I'm glad you're here, is when was the decision made at Tech Park to define the location? It appears the city had to execute, if I'm correct, three separate agreements with I M E A, correct? Those would be siting, easement, and interconnect agreements. And all of those needed a legal description dated then. And they required both Joel and Pete's signature. Furthermore, the siting agreement states that the I D N R, Department of Natural Resources application, had to be done within 15 days of executing that agreement. As a reminder, the date on that particular I D N R application was 9/29/2021. So I'd like to remind that the agreements with I M E A were executed in September of 2021. I may be wrong, so I'm asking, when were these agreements executed? Anybody else? Can I address that?
You don't hear it?
The siting agreement has not been executed. The interconnection agreement is between the city and the developer, Sol, Customer Solutions, has not been executed. And the easement, that's between I M E A and Princeton, also has not been executed. The only thing that's been executed is the power purchase agreement, which is between I M E A and the developer. So the decision to proceed with the testing, the soil testing, the plat was all done in anticipation of, of that being signed? Is that your assumption? Okay, that answers that question. Since we know that there are protected, kind of, tech park, and the solar array is presented did not meet those covenants, and there was an issue, and that issue wasn't addressed before. Pete did inform the zoning commission on October 12th, 2021, and did get their, not necessarily permission, but blessing, and the consensus was to proceed, that there was no formal action taken. Then 14 months later, he's finally brought to the commission asking for a non-specific variance. They tabled it until January 10th, but a conditional variance was approved by a 3-2 vote was two commissioners' answer. We all know that this topic was tabled at the last city council meeting, and now we are here tonight with the mayor wanting approval of a conditional resolution that provides little detail and assurances that an acceptable landscaping plan for the solar array will happen. Ultimately, who makes that decision on what is acceptable? Or who? Can anybody answer that question?
The council. You know, the resolution was conditional three weeks ago, it's conditional tonight on the city approving the landscaping plans.
So I see that there is some landscape renderings there. Has that been met?
That's all we've received so far.
So there's more? Is there more to count?
I think that what we are presented is essentially what they've come up with. And I look at the pictures myself, and I think it looks very nice. I don't think anybody would dispute that it doesn't. Now, that doesn't mean that we approve this, and there can be some tweaking as you go down the road, but as it is now.
You're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
And everybody else, the council's comfortable with it?
Have to discuss it first.
Yeah, we'll discuss it, but, and like I say, you know, it could be tweaking as we go forward.
Okay. And then ultimately, the other thing on that is, once you approve it, if this council's charged to approve it, what assurance is it, is it out there that it's going to be maintained? Because it won't be the city's responsibility, it'll be your responsibility.
Yeah, and he'll talk, he'll address that, I think.
Okay, that's good. Unfortunately, tonight's discussion should have been a year ago, and wonders, and I wonder why it wasn't. At the very least, it would have given ample time for the city to communicate the progress from the lack of progress on the project and fully address all concerns, which have actually chose not to do. Because when there's no discussion, the city council will be, no discussion with the city, the residents, and those property owners, it leads me to believe that there was a feeling that it wasn't going to be an issue. It isn't an issue.
And I have an answer to that, Sam. We didn't have information to share. When this was approved a year or so ago, when we said to go forward with it, the I M E then went and started doing their planning, they didn't provide us, there was nothing for us to discuss. So when we got the plans, and we got the, that's when we put, I don't know, Pete, was that for November, planning session? Yeah. I mean, we didn't, there was nothing for us to discuss. We were just waiting for the plans. They were going forward with the tech park location.
So you couldn't inform people that the tech park was the initial chosen site? Because there is no record of that in the minister or the agenda.
Well.
Because what the resolution you passed was one of two sites, and there is no mention in the documentation, and I read every council, menace, and agenda for that 18-month time period, and there was nothing that stated that it was going to be the tech park. So at the very least, that's one thing that should have been communicated. You knew that. You may not have had the plans and all these other things, but you did the I D N R testing, you did the soil testing, you provided a plat map to potential, and there was a site there in March of last year. So those things, at the very least, maybe you didn't have everything you wanted to have, but it would have been nicer to communicate to everybody involved where this thing was in progress. Because there were some things you did know, that nobody else knew, and that the tech park wasn't the final decision.
Well, legally, you know, I mean, we put everybody on notice once we had the plans, that's when the letters went out, that's what we're, that's what we're charged with doing.
So when was the decision made to move forward to the tech park?
I don't have an answer for that. I'm not sure when that was. I know there was a discussion with the council, and there was an email that was sent out, with council members replying to it, but I can't, I don't have a date for it, Sam.
Is it, I'm assuming there's public record, and I get a copy of that? So you're communicating by email and doing business by email and sending it from the public?
That email came from the city manager.
It doesn't make a difference. It doesn't make a difference. You're doing city business, and it shouldn't be any open.
It wasn't anything that, all it was, was a description of what was going on with the, at the very beginning, and you're going back.
But you're, but you're the only ones that know that, we don't.
Well, again, I don't, for us to, you know, to come up with this and say it's going to go out to tech park a year ago, I mean, they haven't even started on the plans yet. I don't, I don't understand, you know, the necessity for contacting people at the tech park.
But you have potential vendors coming in and looking at the site, responding to requests or proposals. Shouldn't that been something that everybody knew? Did you guys know that? That's my point. This has been mishandled from the get-go. I have no problems with solar energy, no, nothing about that. And I think had the city reached out and started talking to folks, this wouldn't be an issue today. They just wanted input and had some response from the city. And the only response from the city is they had to learn from Pete, and that was 12 months ago. Thanks for your time.
So Gary Stevenson, I M E A, just a couple of things I wanted to address there. I just wanted to respond to the thought that any decision that you make tonight, there might be some sort of negative feedback from I M E A, that's categorically false. This is completely your decision. We are 100% happy, whichever way you go, we're your partner, so, but don't, you shouldn't feel that, I hope you don't. Second thing is with respect to maintenance, the plan for that site is within the fence. We'll have a set of electric robotic mowers, I think six of them, and they will be kind of running around the site periodically, mowing the lawn. We should be nice and quiet, and it'll keep it, you know, below the, well below the eight-inch, eight-inch, you know, code, code level for grass. That's the plan.
Gary, what about landscaping on the outside of the fence?
Thank you. Yeah, landscaping on the outside, you saw the photos, I think the idea there is we would be looking to the city to do, to maintain it. You know, our plan is not to be up here very often, you know, it's a solar site, and it doesn't need a lot of sort of mechanical maintenance. The robotic mowers, you know, they're kind of taking care of the grass inside the fence. So our thinking was that the city would take on the role of being responsible for maintaining the vegetation, which is why it's important that we have a discussion about making sure that the vegetation is low maintenance, so that you're not out there constantly taking care of it, and it's something that, you know, that looks good and doesn't require a tremendous amount of effort and effort.
And again, the city owns the property, so we're not selling it to I M E, we're not leasing it, we're letting them use it to put the solar array up. So the property's ours, it's on the outside as far as maintaining it. You know, as far as mowing, you know, it probably falls to the city, you know, I don't have an issue with that myself. Do you have public comment? Okay, so we'll go to approval of, uh, minutes with Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on January 16th, 2023.
motions for second. Comments? Corral?
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Querem.
Hi. I'll go to approval invoices.
For this cycle, in the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling In the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling $163,017.94. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $377,467.80. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $391,209.09, for a grand total of $1,121,117.81. Mayor, all council members present have indicated their review of all invoices and are submitted for disposition.
And whether we approve the invoices as presented?
Motion. Motion for second. Comments? Corral?
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Querem.
Hi. And I'll go to regular business and city officials.
Next on the agenda is the Resolution RR-23-004, the planned commission conditional recommendation for locating a solar array in the Princeton Technology Park. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
And whether we approve Resolution RR-23-004?
Second. Motion's been second. So open this up to council discussion going forward.
I'm glad that we took the extra three weeks. We had an opportunity to get more information out of the I M E A. We had an opportunity to talk to people that are what I would consider experts in the solar industry, and provided some insight for me. And based on the knowledge that I had and the knowledge that I acquired through the last three weeks, I think this is a project that we need to go forward with. It is our first step to green energy. I think we can't stumble, we need to take that step and move forward. I think the location is acceptable, and I think that we will do our best to make it look as good as it can possibly be.
Just add a couple of comments. Sam, you had mentioned in your comments about, you know, maybe the city spent too much money in this to back out at this point. Cities, this is, this costs the city nothing. From day one to the end, it doesn't cost us anything. It's one of the reasons why this is an attractive option, you know, for the city. So just that. The covenants, a lot of talk about the covenants, we're not following covenants. Covenants actually allow for variances. It allows us, allows the city to adapt to circumstances, and that's what we're doing. I mean, this, this piece of property's been sitting out there for 20 years, and no one's ever come to the city wanting to buy it. So we're adapting to circumstances, and then I go back to the mandates we have for 50% fewer coal-fired fire plant emissions by 2035, 100% by 2049. You know, we're, you know, we're trying to strike, those mandates are in place. Now, they may come drop off someday down the road, but we can't count on that. So the I M E has taken the step that, you know, we need to start moving away from coal and moving towards renewable energy, and this, this one megawatt plant, all the power comes to city. And that's going to reduce our costs in transmitting one megawatt of power from our coal plants down in Southern Illinois and Kentucky. It's, it's a, it's a win-win for the city of Princeton, it's a win for the Princeton Electric Youth. It's going to help us, in the long run, maintain our rates, we won't hopefully have to raise rates as often. So this is, this is a big, this is a, this is a big deal, I think, for the city. The other thing that I heard from ICANN quite a bit, especially in emails that I receive, is that ICANN is, I think they have 58, 58 hospitals in their network. And I got information that the 58 hospitals and the members of ICANN are not happy with this project. They're not happy that a solar array is going next door to the ICANN building. So I had asked for some contact information from some of these hospitals in Southern Illinois, and I didn't get them, so I ended up calling OSF leadership today, by the CEO of the Western section of OSF, that has four hospitals in the ICANN network, Princeton, Mendota, Qwani, and Monmouth. And first of all, they didn't know anything about this solar array. They didn't know anything about this project. And I was assured that OSF has absolutely no problem with a solar array going next to ICANN's building in our tech park. They could, you know, they're, they're pro, they're pro-solar, they have no, no issues where they go next door to a building that, you know, that they're, you know, they don't control, it's just, they have no issue. So I don't think the 58 hospitals care much about what is built in Princeton next to the I M E.
Does your observation to talking to one?
Well, they represent four, oh, four hospitals.
Can you give me the names of those people you talked to?
Yeah, Roxanne Proser, she's the CEO of OSF, Western, we're just reaching, we're just reaching.
And there were others? You said?
I asked, I asked for.
No, no, no. You just talked to one person, Roxanne.
OSF. She controls the entire area, so she's the one to talk to. I would have talked to others down in Southern Illinois, but I was not given the contact information.
So why would you feel compelled to do that?
Because I wanted to.
Because that association, she represents that building, she represents that.
Yeah, I understand.
So you're going to do an end run to go around?
She made a.
Basically, because you guys didn't do your due diligence?
She made a representation to us that her 58 hospitals are not happy with what's going on here.
Because she's not happy, and that's why.
That's not what she's saying. Sorry.
Joel.
I'm sorry.
You guys didn't do your due diligence?
Yep.
And you're going to deflect it, and that's what you're doing?
We did our due diligence.
You did?
Yeah.
Did you guys know what was going on? Answer my question, please. You didn't have to, or you didn't know?
Okay. I am going to say something. Now, everybody knows who I am, okay? Pat Gomez, administrator of the Health Department, 17 years this man. Pat's calling has been the board, in the Board of Health since 1993. Okay? And there's a reason why I'm saying that. Because someone basically has told me that I was going to be exposed today, that I work for the Health Department and Pat's Cosmo. for the Health Department and Pat's not my boss. I personally don't see, what I would do, anything, if she was to tell me not to do it, I would not listen. I have to do what I believe is right for the city, period. Now, they had told me to do that and I should recuse myself. I also talked to our attorney by phone and he stated that there, there is a, there's not a statute for it.
No, you're to common law.
There's a common law. Okay? He did recommend that I would recuse myself from it because it might be in conflict of interest. Like I said, I wouldn't tell anything. I have not said anything about it. I have not heard anything about it since we started. However, because I was told that basically in an email, again, saying that I was going to be exposed to this, this is common knowledge. We've been in the Health Department, especially the last two years, everything that's been going on. They should not be anything in there as far as transparency, common knowledge. Again, due diligence. I was also told that that was the first time that they heard about that she was my boss and she's been with the Board of Health since 1993. Okay? I understand the common law and I was, I was prepared to be, you know, to recuse myself from this. Okay? Which I would, I still would. I do not want to do anything that's going to be in conflict or somebody might perceive or see as that in conflict. However, but to go in that way and kind of, if I was going to be exposed to that, I think it is not very professional, period.
And Hector, who made that assertion?
I did.
That was Joe Merrick.
And I'm going to read to you what I wrote to him.
Well, if.
Because this should have been.
I want to get copies of that.
This should have been.
For the last two weeks.
Yeah, this, this should have been disclosed three weeks ago. He should have disclosed the relationship with ICANN, with Pat Scott, three weeks ago. I didn't know Pat Scott was the chairman of Bureau County Board of Health. So at the time.
How much time?
This should have been disclosed back then. And then, so I'm going to read to you just, just a part of what I wrote. It's perceptions. The perception in Hector's case, given her relationship with Pat, the chair of the Bureau County Health Department, the board that she led when Hector was promoted to his current position in the department, he now runs, is that he puts his own self-interest above the interest of the city and its electric paying residents. You know, as you remember, we were talking about tabling this motion and Hector said that I want language in the resolution to take the tech park out. And he was told that, no, we can't do that. The resolution is the resolution. So then he voted no to table it. When we table something like this, it's to go out and do our due diligence to get more information from what we learned from everybody three weeks ago.
18 months into the project.
The motion to, Sam, please.
Okay.
The motion to table was made by Marty. It was a, it was a smart motion and it was the right motion to make and everybody should have voted to table it. We had two that did not. So it's all about the perception. The possible perception, the possible probable perception is that Hector supported the position of the head of his department's board on a matter of extreme importance to her. She's the one who's driving this, this whole thing about the solar.
No.
That's all, that's who we've.
What do you think Hector said that they do?
Yeah, I understand that. But she's the one who started it, so rather than the city. Possibly, and again, it's perceptions, possibly for financial reward or job stability. It doesn't matter if there's no truth to it. It's the perception and the community's trust that does. That is what matters. And there aren't many fine-minded people, in my opinion, that would come away and think anything different. You know, when we had the food truck issue, Mike McCall recused himself from all discussions on the food truck issue, not because he had anything to do with food trucks, but because he has relationships with some of the businesses, restaurants here in town. An indirect, it was the perception that he might be not fair. It was the right thing to do. Hector's situation is far, far from being something minor, in my, in my, that's my opinion. And I think that would be the opinion of a lot of people out there. Bring this up and disclose it and then I, I asked him not to, I asked him to recuse himself tonight and I asked him not to vote. Can't tell him not to.
Who did I ask?
Oh, so I'm going to read to you.
Now, I have a statement. If this would have gone through, and I would have guessed, would that issue ever would have come up?
I don't know. I don't know if it would have gone through. The thing would have been done. We would have moved on. There probably would have been, no, there probably would have been no information that Pat Scott was the.
So this only went through because you cannot get away?
Yeah, that's it. That's it. That's exactly what I did. I take my position as mayor extremely seriously. I've been here for the residents. Whether they agree with it or not, I'm here and I promote for the city of Princeton and its residents, for its electric paying customers and for its taxpayers.
By sending very bad emails to residents and not respecting their positions as well?
Yeah, I don't understand what you're saying there.
I know you don't. One, one comment I will say is, I'm pretty much done with this part right here, but I respect the decision of Mayor. Okay? However, respect is earned. It is not given. And anybody that's serving the military should know that.
Yeah, anybody else have anything? I'm looking for something that I want to refer to.
Is there a way we move forward for a vote?
Yeah, yeah, just as long as everybody doesn't have any more, any more comments.
And everybody feels comfortable how this was done? Well, I, I, and the reason, look, and the thing I didn't.
Well, Sam, it's not, you can bring this up at the public comment at the end. But you already, yeah, we can.
You can address me, but I can't address you.
Yeah, you can. You did at the beginning. You can't at the end.
Yeah, but you addressed me during this conversation.
Uh, let's see.
I think it'd be wise if we had moved forward to public now.
So this is part of the email because as I said, I asked, I'm asking you to expose what your relationship is with Pat and then recuse yourself from all discussion. I'm also asking you to explain why you didn't do so at your last meeting.
Because I didn't believe it was anything that I was doing was wrong. I just couldn't make the right decision.
And.
Now, why, why would you fold something like if I can't read it? It's like putting everything in large caps.
Uh, I didn't put in the emails.
No, it's folded, like if I can't read it. These are like the other emails.
I'm not sure I know what you're saying. That's, that's just my, that's my computer. That's how it types out. I'm sorry, Hector. All my, all these emails, same way. I apologize for that. Okay, anybody else have any comments? All right, the motion hands in second. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Yes.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda are resolutions authorizing abatement of the 2022 tax levy, specifically Resolution RR-23-005 for Series 213-A bond. It is originally in the original amount of $900,000. Second resolution being RR-23-006, bond number 2014-D. Original amount of the bond was $11,170,000. Third resolution being RR-23-007, bond number 2019-A for an original financing amount of $1.4 million. Followed by Resolution RR-23-008 for bond number 2019-B. Original finance amount was $2.8 million. And finally, Resolution RR-23-009, bond number 2019-C, original finance amount of 40, oh, sorry, $400,000. Mayor, all council members have reviewed these resolutions and they are submitted for resolution, for what do you say?
Approve.
Okay.
I move that we approve the following resolutions.
Second.
Resolution RR-23-005, Resolution RR-23-006, RR-23-007, RR-23-008, and finally RR-23-009.
Second.
Motion for the second comments? Call roll. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make one quick note. On the very last resolution, RR-23-009, this will be our actual, be our last payment coming up this coming fiscal year. So at least one of those will be falling off. Actually, we have three to four of our debts falling off this next fiscal year. So slowly chipping away at those.
Any comments with council? Motion's been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Hi.
Second, okay. Hector, do second.
Yeah, you do.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-23-002. This is the first reading for an amendment to the fiscal year budget of May 1st, 2020 through, 22 through April 30th of 2023. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it's submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O-23-002 to the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been second. Comments?
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Querom. Hi. Anything, please, a minute? I think I, I'll take a couple of board appointments.
I move that we approve the following appointments. To the Princeton Arts Commission, Emily Bolson and Matt Adams, both filling unexpired three-year terms ending April 30th, 2024. To the Pedestrian Bicycle Commission, Leo Artega, filling an unexpired, unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2024.
Motion's been second. Comments?
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
McCransky.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Hi.
So part of my conversation this morning with OSF, it was a lengthy conversation. We talked a lot about what happened with I V C H and what the future is for our area. You know, what happened at I V C H doesn't just affect the Illinois Valley area, it affects us. It affects, it affects a pretty large region that surrounds Los Alamos, Princeton and so on. OSF, I was told I could share this. There is nothing definitive yet. There's nothing, there's no timetable on this. But OSF for the last three months, because they, they knew that there was something, that they knew something was in the works with I V C H. They have been working on a solution for our area. So they are, I think we can expect that at some point, and sooner rather than later, I was told, we will be seeing a pre and postnatal clinic at OSF St. Clair. So that will be a huge big gap to everybody that's expecting as far as doctor visits, pre and post birth. At least they're still going to have to go somewhere to give birth, but they'll save a lot of time on traveling. So hopefully we'll be seeing that in a not too distant future. But it's something they've been working on now for three months, so I think they're pretty far along. Where are the old business? Any new business?
Yeah, I have old business. Anything on the, on the trucks? I have the trucks on the Maslow down by Widdo.
I believe we've reported a few times on this that they were not, they were expected to be in February. They have been pushed back to spring. As you saw in the amendments, if you noticed, the totes haven't purchased or were much less than expected to push. I had, had been amended for that. I did not amend for the trucks that we have, the money set aside for. We're still pressing our fingers. They come in before the end of fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's been a lot of comments, I noticed, about, you know, we're not going to have cleanup week anymore. But to make up for that, you're going to have a 90 gallon or 65 gallon can, but you'll also be able to put out one bulk every week as long as you have stickers on it. So you have the sulfur you got to get rid of. You can put it to curb with stickers if you have, you know, whatever. And they won't get it with the one-armed truck, but they will come back and get it with a, if they need, you know, a dump truck or whatever to pick that stuff up. So it will be allowed one bulk item every week. So any old bus or new business? Public comments?
My name is Patty Nelson and my husband David was up here speaking earlier and you made a comment about the fact that you are not starting the fires. They are combustible. However, Quinn did tell David today that they have started that fire that is burning out there.
It's out there now.
It's out there now.
Yeah.
Well, but I don't want you to think, because I talked to Pete Nelson about this and he is trying to tell me they're always combustible. And Quinn said today they have started it. And I am here to tell you tonight when we stepped out to come to this meeting, it stinks so bad. And our car smells so bad from this. So every morning when we get in our vehicles, that's what we get to smell.
So you live north of there? So it's this way?
We live in Old Denmark.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it comes right across over that way. Okay?
Um, just in our respective houses that speak up earlier, but I knew, knew we needed to move on. Quinn did come in today. We've been trying to figure out this issue since I've been up here. We've tried a couple of different things. Obviously, they have not worked. The only thing that we can possibly do is to buy that air curtain. And I'm trying to get the budget going for this next fiscal year and the quote was $170,000. So I, I know, I know when it feels, when it affects you, it's, it's worth it. We are trying to make it work and I'm going to try to get into this budget, just so that you know. It is, it's not being forgotten. We're trying our darndest to get it to, to work. It's, I think it's our only answer.
Well, he also told me this today when I went down this afternoon, they light the fires only when it's in an east wind. I go, well, east wind in the morning, but guess what? That changes in the afternoon, evening, every time. So he, he admitted they're lighting that fire more than you guys are letting on.
Well.
What on earth are we, we do?
Well, many times I've come down and complained. I think you would circle that extra, what, a half a mile out of your way? I'm sure I'm not the only one that's been complaining about it. According to Quinn, there's been several people.
That's why I'm to the point. This is the only answer we have for it.
So you're talking another 10, 15 years.
What, I just thought that we were trying to get into this next budget.
I realize that, but this has been going on for 10 years already. Now you're just trying to get it into the budget. I thought that was an EPA thing that it had to have an air curtain. Well, as a good neighbor, you ought to be doing some old pastor ones for my family. Sure, if you lived out there, things would be different. Any of you up there in the council, you wouldn't tolerate it.
When Jeff Thaden Chu was, I believe, in your position and the lady before you, they all, they all came out that way. Jeff, I think, ran the hills out that way at night to run. He couldn't leave the smell of what it was like out there. And Rachel, of course, living out there on the north end of town, it was coming towards them all, you know, like we were getting it out there. And she did, I'm not sure how she did it, but the fires, or however they start.
Whatever they want.
Yeah, they, they kind of subsided and it was really good. And now all of a sudden, everybody's gone, everybody knew and they're all going again. And it's all year long. It isn't only in the spring. It's all year long. Smell it.
Any other, Geraldine, you have your handle now?
My name is Geraldine Woodness. I didn't think I had any crowd this evening. I have two questions. Years ago, when we started moving types of light bulbs, the hardware store was taking that so we wouldn't put it in recycle. What do we do with these things? What do we do with batteries? I'm not talking about a car battery, but I thought these batteries that we get from flashlights and all the toys are supposed to be someplace, but not in the recycle.
Good question.
Thank you.
The batteries can be recycled.
Okay.
The batteries can be recycled.
The batteries can be recycled.
Yeah, then, batteries and things over in Peru will take care of it, at least in the past they have.
Oh, recycled, but where do we take them, I guess is my question now.
The only place I know of is, uh, batteries and things over in Peru.
Okay, check that. Well, what about the light bulbs? Remember when the curly ones and all the rest of those started to, oh, True Value was taking-
I haven't had any burnout.
Pardon?
I haven't had any burnout.
Uh, thank you. You're not burning off lights.
We'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn, I think to me. I move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening and come together for our next meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, seven o'clock at City Hall.
Second.
Motion's been second, call roll.